Good afternoon, I'm gonna call the study session to order, the city clerk will call the roll.
The record will reflect that Mayor Protamhead and Councilmember Rozansky are currently absent.
The first order of business is clarification for any items on the consent calendar, Mr. Selich.
None.
Councilmember Daigle?
Yes, I did have a question on, or clarification on item 25, so I didn't have to call it this evening, and that is, the information presented, I think, will ultimately have application to our budget. But what I had asked for a couple of weeks ago was a workflow analysis, and did so after conferring with my colleagues in the council, on the finance committee and the city manager. And the idea, the concept behind that is, you know, it takes some inertia for the wheels of government to turn. And what I wanted to do, or try to do, is to reduce the friction. And friction as in, you know, lots of review and those types of things. So I was wondering where we're at with the workflow analysis.
Mayor Curry, Councilmember Daigle, and councilmembers, I've committed to working with the city attorney on that type of review in terms of assisting, especially in agenda review and preparation, and bringing a report back to you prior to the adoption of your budget next, in two weeks from now. So we should be set to have that back to you at that time.
Okay, thank you. So it's more encompassing than just how we review staff reports, but other areas as well, contract review, or just sort of the gamut of what's happening?
Our particular focus is how it relates to specifically the agenda. And I'm always happy to help David out if he has other thoughts about process things, but that's at least what we're starting with on that.
Okay, so that's a start. My concern had been, you know, for example, with public works, where we need to do $18 million in projects next year, that's what we have planned. And in order for those projects to get done, I don't want to see them bogged down with reviews that maybe we hadn't done, been done in the past.
Understood.
Okay, Councilmember Carter. Councilmember Webb?
I have none.
And I have none. Next item of business is automatic water meter reading presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. On your agenda, item number 15 is a contract, we're seeking your approval to move forward on contracting out the reading, after the meter reading services that currently the city staff provide. Since it's such a change in business on how we do things, it's appropriate to, one, give you a little bit of background, and also give you the opportunity, I want to introduce you to James Beck. He's the vice president of Alexander's meter reading company, and he can answer some detailed questions with a quick PowerPoint, to talk to you a little bit about what they do, what they provide. So, in regards to the background, through call back in December, we had an early retirement incentive program. Three of the 12 individuals who left utilities were from our water meter reading division. One being our meter reader supervisor, a crew chief, and then also a meter reader. That gave us an opportunity to really look at efficiencies, cost-effective solutions to improve our efficiencies in the department. And so what we did is we reorganized our department in divisions and consolidated services, but to do more with less, we looked at other agencies and took the lead from cities like San Juan, Capistrano, San Clemente, and Irvine Ranch Water District, who are moving towards that solution of contracting out the reading portion of it, where they just have a contractor comes in and just reads the numbers and put it in the database. And so we sent out an RFP in January to four vendors in California that do this type of service. And we only had one responsive proposal from Alexander. And in looking at that proposal, we can see in the staff report that the city would save approximately $33,000 just in that service portion if we compared the city staff reading the meters compared to a contractor reading the meters. So there's, it definitely meets our objective of cost effectiveness. Efficiency, though, we were surprised when we got this proposal of how we can improve efficiencies. A contract meter reader company that comes in can, for instance, blanket an area with multiple readers and get it done quicker. We estimate that since they're reading in Irvine Ranch Water District, they can come into this bi-glass area, for instance, and they can read 13,000 meters in something like two days. What that does is it gets the data into the database and allows our revenue staff to have a little bit more time to process the bills. It was taking us 15 days with just sending out two or three readers, city staff. So it's a huge advantage to not only us, but to the revenue division, and give us a little bit more time to process bills and to do more things. The other thing is that they, their technology is much more advanced. We've been using these antiquated versa term devices that we've had for some years. We pay a soft, annual software support, we maintain these old devices. And these devices that we use now don't hold much memory. So often we'll see our readers take out two of these devices, because they read, when the one is full, then they read another one. Then they bring the devices in at the end of the day, and they plug them into a machine that uploads the data to our billing database, and it takes several days to get this done. So not only was it a cost-effective solution, we believe, in contracting the service, but there's many other advantages that we got by looking at this type of service. So we're thinking initially, of course, that we would contract out half. We read about 26,000 meters in every two months. And so we would contract out 13,000 meters every other month, so we'll stay with the every other month reading. However, our folks would have to kind of mirror with them and piggyback, show them the routes, there's a learning curve for them to get on board. And then we would go with them reading half the meters, the city staff reading the other half, and work together. Since we only read the meters every other month, that means that if they read the meters three times, that's a six-month period, that we could go like this for some time as a trial period and kind of see how this, how the database works and work the bugs out if you were. And then from there on, we could come back to you in maybe six or eight months if it's successful, and look at an entire contract to save even a little bit more money. So, in a nutshell, that's really the direction we're going. I'd like to take the opportunity to bring James up to ask any, if you have any questions for him, or if you have any questions for me.
Just, how, there are other vendors out there, but we only got one response, any thoughts of why that was?
Yeah, it's, Southern California Edison initially, let me back up a little bit. Irvine Ranch Water District looked at this some time ago, and they contracted with the Edison Company, who read their water meters. Edison Company went in a different direction and went completely electronic, as you can see and you've heard about. They're putting electronic reading devices on all your home meters as well. So they lost that service. The four vendors were Northern California area, and they just didn't want to respond. There was a, Golden State was another company that we contacted, who are fairly local, but didn't want to compete. So even though we asked and solicited for prices, they didn't want to either move down to Southern California. I think the advantage to Alexander's would be is that they're reading 15 agencies in Orange County now. To expand a few more folks and to move into the next area is easy, because they don't have to mobilize their database and their, and their people and equipment. So we were happy with that, and it seemed like, again, he'll give you more detail on who he's servicing, but... Right, well, any questions?
I have a question.
Sure.
You may have covered it, I'm sorry I'm late. So, in going to the, this contract system, what about the employees that currently read the meters? What are happening with those?
As part of the early retirement, we eliminated two. We consolidated services.
How many are there altogether?
We had six. Meter readers entire, there were six meter people in that meter division. We eliminated two of the meter readers just alone. But I reorganized the department, so I now have a customer service division. I pulled, I pulled people from other departments into this new division. So to answer your question, it was six, there's now, I guess technically, four, but they're doing more stuff. They're now going to answer water pressure calls and water quality calls. And it's gonna be, what we want is when a customer calls and asks for any kind of service, from a water audit to leak detection, we can send one of our folks out in a shiny white truck, and they can answer all their questions. Right now, we kind of bounce them around from water quality divisions to water pressure. And rather than repeat, or have several folks go out to the same resident, we just want to consolidate that into a customer service division. So we eliminated, overall cost savings wise, maybe this helps, we cut about $350,000 in employee salaries department-wide. We'll save $33,000 with this contract and just the meter portion. The meter readers that we currently have do more than just read meters. They also do meter replacement and service and leak detection and customer service. So we'll save some money there, and then we have this equipment maintenance, which I was just talking about, where we don't have to maintain this antiquated system that we currently have, so...
So, other than the two positions that have already been eliminated, we're not planning on eliminating any more positions, they've just been slotted into other things or taken on new duties?
Right, we eliminated, department-wise, department-wide, we eliminated six positions. I took out people from other divisions as well. Because they're not gonna handle the customer service, we moved those folks over to the customer service division. So we had a complete shift of employees and staff, but we think it's a good area to consolidate and look at cost efficiencies on what folks do.
But we're not gonna see any further reductions in staff because of this contracting out?
No, this, right now, we kept, after December, we kept a couple of people on board and contract to just maintain the system. Those folks, those folks will go away. We ultimately stopped doing meter replacement, and the AMR, the automated meter reading technology, came to a complete stop, because we're now sending folks out to read meters. With the hopes of this is that we're gonna implement, we have a brand-new supervisor on that division, which I'm quite pleased. He's got an, envisioned a plan of doing automated meter replacement, so we can look at the technology. And the meter replacement for standard meters will be launched shortly after we can get this going. And that's to replace these antiquated meters that are over 30 years old. We see that in the city, that meters such in bi-glass and Harbor Ridge, the areas that were developed in the early 70s, those meters are the original meters, and they're not working very efficiently. And so we need to launch a more aggressive approach. The reason I mention that is the people that are left behind. We want to develop a division, within that division, just a meter replacement crew that goes out and replaces these things, and they can get several of them done. And we can realize some revenue by, by making these meters more efficient. So we'll shift some of those duties as well.
But, but at the end of the day, the budget's actually going up, not down.
At the end of the day...
It's going up by $60,000, not down by...
At the end of the day, with the overall $350,000, we'll pay for this out of our overall department-wide savings. So overall, we went, again, from 62 or three employees down to 55, saved $350,000, which will more than pay for this. We're still gonna stay with the bi-monthly, so we would be paying an employee, we cut two folks. So overall, it's actually going up then, I guess, by, it's $60,000.
It's going up by the contract.
It's going up.
We're not letting anybody go. I mean, we may be providing a different service, or better service, or other service, or backfilling positions, I guess, that you found that you need to. I just want to be clear that we're not really saving money here, we're really spending more money than we are currently today.
Well, Councilmember Rozansky, Mr. Mayor, you are, that is putting a fine point on it. The, during the E-RIP process, though, the understanding in Georgia's department was that this would be a service that would be contracted out as soon as we could pull the contract together. So I consider this part of the overall savings.
Well, the overall savings are just not as much as they were yesterday.
Well, hopefully, we characterize them at the right amount that included the cost of the new contract coming in.
Well, did we, when we, when we talked about the positions we lost?
We'll have to go back and look at the staff report, I'd be happy to do that.
Okay, just let me know, you can just send me an email.
Yes, thank you. So as I understand this, and I'm not sure I fully understand it, is we used to read the meters every other month, and then on the off-month would go on these service calls. And so now we've increased the service by reading meters every month and going on service calls every month. But I never got complaints about the level of service when I was at that level. And it seems that by increasing this level of service, then it's become more expensive. And I'm not sure that the additional service is really desired by the community, demanded by the community, or really something necessary. Maybe you can explain that to me? First of all, is that what's going on, or what is happening?
Let me, let me explain how the meter reader, out of the 26,000 meters that we read, we read 13,000 meters, half of the meters one month. The next month, we read the other 13,000, and then we go back the third month and read it. So we're reading every other month, but only half of the meters, if that makes sense. We read the meters in a month's period, from the first to the 15th. Our current meter reader staff, which are utility specialists, from the 16th to the end of the month, being the 30th, 31st, do all the meter maintenance. And this gives the revenue division the ability to get the data in, you know, create the bills, get them sent out. We do meter turn-on, turn-offs, late payments, so there's a two-week window in there. Contracting it out, contracting out a portion of the service will really mean that we'll read the month, we'll read the meters 13,000, for instance, January, from the first to the 15th. In February, we'll have a contract service do it. In March, we'll be back out reading our, the same areas, one and two, the other half of the city. Although our utility specialists do read meters, they, they have an hourly rate with benefits. Compared to what a contract service is, it is less expensive. In fact, it's $33,000 year annually less. We cut the positions, so the positions are where the savings are. And we identified in the E-RIP that if we reduce the staff number by two folks in that division, that would pay for the contract itself.
So what if we didn't do the contract, could you, would there be a reduction in the level of current service to the community?
Yes, what, what, what we've done to get by since E-RIP, since the E-RIP program went in effect in December, are, we've pulled them off of other stuff, which is the meter replacement, the AMR installations, the water audits. We do, we do the level of service that we do for emergency leaks, of course. But we see a need to replace these antiquated meters. And so we've pretty much put that on hold until we can get somebody on board. If we don't contract, you're right, I'll have to reorganize the department again and try to figure out how to provide that level of service that we do now, and not let our meters get so old that they just stop working. So that's currently where we're at.
Thank you.
And I assume that Alexander's meter readers, when they go around, will make reports to you on leaky meters and, and meters that they feel need to replace, so that you can plug that in, because I know that's been one of the really important parts, is the meter readers that we have are familiar with what needs to be done. And they have then been able to get them properly. And I think, I think one of the things that, the older the meter, not always, but the older the meter, it doesn't work quite as well, and usually what it does is it doesn't measure, it measures low rather than high usually, doesn't it?
Right, that's correct.
Okay, so it's not to our benefit to have really old meters from the standpoint of we might not be accurately measuring the amount of water being served?
You're absolutely right. The, the technology, which I mentioned, and hopefully James can talk about this a little bit, their wireless handheld devices have codes in them. What happens now, when our folks go out there and they see a leak, for instance, either they have to report that into the boss, or try to stop and fix something right then and there, which is a delay in time. So what we tell them to do is make notes of tripping hazards and leaks on property. When you come in at the end of the evening, report that to your supervisor, and then we'll write up a service request. A contract, the contract reading service has wireless handhelds, so the data and information and codes that identify issues and, that they see out in the field can be reported immediately back to their office. And then that, those codes, as you mentioned, no matter it's a trip hazard, a trimming issue, a leak, or an audit, those are reported then to us in a report format via the web, which is a lot more efficient than we currently do. So we see that the technology is much more advanced, so they, they've gone a little bit beyond what we currently do.
Thank you, George, I think, did the representative from Alexander?
Yeah, so let me introduce James Beck.
Hello, my name is Jim, I'm the vice president at Alexander's. And hopefully I'll be able to clarify any questions you have. You guys always saw this packet, kind of a simple five-point packet, so...
You have a last name, Jim?
Beck. The first page basically covered Alexander's history. We've been reading meters since 1969, and we're statewide. We're from San Clemente all the way up to Sacramento County, reading, reading a lot of cities around you guys currently. And, you know, this, this creates a very stable service for the cities here, being that we have a lot of resources locally. We've got, you know, 40 or 50 employees, and locally, there's 20 guys we can leverage here. We're reading Irvine Ranch, which is probably, actually borders you guys, San Juan, Capistrano, San Clemente. So we're very close. Any questions regarding Alexander's background? So we'll get into Alexander's approach and the technology, something that we're very proud of. Alexander's has moved fully to a wireless, kind of a web-based approach. All the handhelds in the field report directly to what we call a smart server. We call that smart server technology, SST. So each reader wirelessly can demand his routes and report anything he's doing in real time. And it, we, we've kind of eliminated the need for a crew to meet together and delegate routes and cradle and all the things that you currently do inside of the administrative office. So we're removing all of that burden from the billing department to have to load these routes, hand out these handhelds, and read very linear, so it's wireless. A reader could literally leave from his home and begin reading, because he's independent. When reading with your crew, our technology's available for them to read the cycles they're gonna be reading, while we're reading some of them, so that we're still just providing one interface for the billing department. They have a website they go to, they receive their reads on time and accurately, regardless of whether it's a city employee or an Alexander's employee reading it. To them, it's all one system. And providing one system, we also leverage other technologies. We can do drive-by radio or fixed base, we'll all report to our website currently. So if you move into a newer technology, it's kind of a gateway into the AMR world, because as we're reading manually, you can also be receiving drive-by radio or fixed base reads, all to the same system, so your billing staff really is just dealing with one interface. Any questions on the, on the basic overview of how we, we approach reading your meters? All of this then is made available through a series of reports on our website that anybody can access, that's given a PIN number and a password. So it can, you know, the ability to share this information is very, very simple. They simply get an internet, or they get an internet password and PIN number, they can log in, download data, customer history, as far as reads are concerned, there's never any personal data. But they can go through and look up a customer address or ID number and get 18 months' worth of read history in the field, mobiley, smartphones, laptops. It's made available to the readers and the entire billing staff. And then we've streamlined these reports. When you go in to deal with what we call exceptions, there would be high reads, low reads, or meters that have a trouble code in the sense that we couldn't read them, or they have a leak. These reports are streamlined so that the billing staff simply accepts the read as being exception, or they can reroute it back to the field via smartphones or PDA. So what we've done is eliminated the need to create a work order. That work order goes out with a worker, he writes on it, it comes back, the billing staff looks up the account, hand enters the data, and then does that for every, every exception. That's gone, so they simply go through and either accept it or send it back to the field. When the field person rereads it, it goes back to the accepted report. So it's, it's a very simple workflow. It just says, basically trickles down the exceptions to a verified report. It's over, everybody knows it's been looked at, and it just makes it very simple for workflow. So all these reports are made available and are easily quantifiable, meaning we only show the data that's necessary to make the given decision. We're not gonna produce reports that, that have a lot of data that you then have to try to figure out what's going on. We've narrowed them down just to the problems that you have, and then one or two options of what you should do about it. Makes it, makes it pretty simple. Any questions on that?
I have a question. When, he's actually out, or the reader's out in the field reading the meter, and let's say there's, he's making a mistake reading the meter, okay? Will it tell them that right then and there? I mean, will he have that information, will it be able to tell them, or it actually, someone's actually gonna have to flag it, or it will be flagged when the report goes in?
Okay, good question. That lends right into accuracy, and, and what we've done for that is, the, the billing, the billing department has, has a set of parameters. And they say, between here and here is where this read should fall. We do not show those reads to our readers, meaning they're, they're effectively on the first-pass reading blind. So they go up to the address, they enter the read. If it's not in that narrow parameter, the unit will not accept it. And we know there's, there's roughly up to five digits, so there's 999,000 possibilities. So they can't really guess what that little 20-unit window would be. So if they're outside of that, it then prompts them for the ID number, which is only found on the meter. They have to key in the proper number to unlock the unit. Once that happens, it'll show them the previous read, customer history, so they can then make an assessment of why they misread it. But what we've done is confirm that they're actually at the right meter. They can't be sitting in a restaurant or under a tree, they must be at the meter, and we've eliminated that. It, it's, what's the best part is, it's now the same every time. We don't, we don't have any accuracy issues for that reason. And we, we call that the ID lock, but that's the first pass. So the meter reader has to unlock the unit and put in the read. It's still may flag as an exception, because there's still human error. You know, he's mistaken a three for an eight or something, twice.
Right.
That then flags to our supervisor's unit. So when he sinks, instantly it tells our supervisor, hey, you have an exception over there. He then goes and verifies it to make sure that it's okay. Then it becomes a verified exception, that's when the billing staff sees it, in those reports I was talking about. So it's already been through two levels. One, they unlocked it with a physical ID, which is kind of a location authentication. Two, a supervisor's looked at it with his knowledge of your system. And then three, the city billing person has the ability to resend it back out to the field to anyone she chooses, whether it be her staff or our staff, via iPhones, BlackBerry, Android. So we interface with smartphones for the third and final reading. And this all happens prior to import, so that when she imports into billing, it's done. There's no trying to run a second set of reports. It's all automated and allows her to, to be done once, once the data's imported. And that's how we maintain our high accuracy.
Okay, and so that would be a situation like if there was a leak and you had an exceptionally high reading, or let's say the person's been on vacation, hasn't used any water at all. Those are, say, two, two different ends of what you might be coming up with?
Yeah, an exception would be, the read we took is below the read from last month. That's impossible, shit, that's, something's wrong. So we'll send somebody out to look at it, or at least make them unlock it, verify it, manager, and then the city will typically send out someone as well. Then there's the extremely high, right? They've filled a swimming pool, or they've broke a line, or the usage is just way high and we want to investigate it. That's called a high-reading exception. Then there's the unread, which is simply a car's parked on it. We typically don't interface the homeowner, we won't knock on the door, we're not a representative of the water company. We make an attempt to read the meter, meaning if I can't read it, it's because someone needs to interface that customer, and that's usually a city employee that does that. And then the only other exception would be a trouble note or a maintenance note. Trim bushes, there's a leak at the meter, lids are broken, right, there's liability issues. So there's a ton of other notes that may trigger a reread as well. And then we, we touch on support, we've got, we've got a lot of employees, managers, readers in this area. So that many are not needed, but they're here. If we had to pull in 20 guys, we could easily do it. So, so reading and meeting your deadlines will never be an issue here in Newport. And then finally, how we look to the community, that's, that's important. So all of our readers are well-groomed, they all wear the same uniform, they all wear reflective vests that say meter reader. They're issued a unit and a meter reading stick, which they use. Typically, they'll ride a scooter, or in a white truck that's well-marked as meter reader. We do not put water department, or city, or anything, because we're not. We're simply the meter reader. If they, if someone asks them questions beyond the process of reading the meter, they, they hand them a card to our supervisor and say, you're welcome to call him for, for, for questions. And we, we go that way, so that they talk to one of our managers, and if we need to, then it goes to the city. This is also issued to the police department, so that they know what we look like, because typically the calls are, I've got a strange guy in my yard, I've never seen him before, he's not my normal meter reader. So we, we let the police departments know that we're here, what we look like, and they, they all wear an ID badge. Any questions regarding that? So that's, that's kind of our services in a nutshell.
Councilmember Daigle?
Did you bid on this, or how did that work, or was it more of a collaboration? How did you sort of, how are we pricing these, this contract?
We received an RFP, and we responded to it. We received an RFP, and we responded to it.
Okay. Were there other firms that competed, or how did that work?
Councilmember Diggle, I think, is wondering if there was a negotiation involved after the bid was submitted. George, you want to come in on that?
We sent out an RFP for qualifications, but also for, we did it, broke it down by a price per meter. That was the best way we could do it. We looked at what our staff, with salary and benefits, and what it costs us to read a meter. On that basis, then, we asked folks to send us a price per meter, and that's out of the, everyone we sent it to, which were the four individuals. No one was interested to come down here, other than Alexander's. So, we used that price per meter to compare what we, what we cost, what our costs are to read a meter.
So, in effect, they're maximizing their profit, because they're matching the, sort of the city price per meter. But if you had put out for a price per meter, it's conceivable that somebody out there could do a lower price than the city price per meter.
Yes, however, no, it's lower than, ours is a dollar twenty or something per meter. So, one, they're lower. Two, we contacted those agencies that I mentioned earlier, IRWD, San Juan Capistrano, San Clemente. We, in fact, went down and met with City of San Juan Capistrano, and we flat-out asked them what they're paying per meter. That was the best way we could do it. We believe it's equal to what the Irvine Ranch Water District, it's exactly the same price, although services are a little bit different. But on a read price, it's the same. So, we felt that it was a fair price.
Okay, I guess my concern is that the private firm would probably not want to undercut the city price, because they can see that you still want to have people, the city, read it. Do you understand what I'm saying?
They did undercut the city price.
Okay, how much more could they?
If we take a price per meter, that's the easiest breakdown. And in the staff report, I explain, because our folks do other things, other meters, so I want to quantify that. But if we use city staff at salary and benefits to do the same exact service that they're offering us, as far as just reading the numbers and getting it into a database, it's approximately thirty-three thousand dollars less than what we're currently spending. That's reading half the meters. You saw there's a little paragraph in the staff report that said, "If we did the entire thing, it would be sixty-six thousand." That afforded us the ability to cut staff, so that was where our savings was overall. But it is cheaper than what we're paying a full-time staff member to read meters.
And back to Councilman Rozansky's point, the overall costs, though, have increased.
But you're right, increased from, say, yesterday, but lower than January before E-RIP. We're significantly lower, because this was part of the overall E-RIP effort, is to move, it's similar, it's similar to what we did with street sweeping. We laid, sorry, we let people go through E-RIP, and then we decided to contract out that function that city staffers formerly did.
Okay, and the staff's position, that is what's been happening in the last four or five months, is not sustainable?
What's been happening, in large part because of exactly what George said. We're missing the ongoing obligation that we have to swap out old meters. Ultimately, that will cost us more in the long run, because they're in such bad shape.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Is there any action we need to take, or direction we need to give? It's disinformational, okay?
Yeah, the item is on the agenda tonight, so it's a precursor to that.
Great, thank you, George. Thank you, Jim.
Well, just to, so Leslie can feel like she got the answers I think she was looking for. The city, it costs us a dollar thirty-six per meter, based upon the figures that George has in our report. And they're going to do it for ninety-five cents a meter. So, we saved about forty-one cents a meter.
And it was put out to bid. This was the only person that responded.
But they didn't just take what we're paying.
Are there any members of the public who wish to speak on this matter? All right, seeing that, we'll go to the next item on the agenda, which is Fourth of July safety. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. And I would note, I, we're missing the presence of Mayor Pro Tem Hen. He, of course, is with his wife, who's lots of, lots of concern, her way for her health, so. But this is something that was very important to Councilmember Hen. We, we've had a goal, he's had a goal, and I think the council shares that, to bring the Fourth of July in West Newport down to a much more normal, family-friendly level, so that people can have fun, but it's not as out of control as it has been, and nor do people feel like they've been corralled into, basically, a war zone. So, this is the first step of possibly a two-to-three-year process to change the whole tenor of Fourth of July. And Tara Finnegan, our Public Information Manager, has been working on this with the police department. I want to, in advance, thank them for all the hard thought that went into this. This is the first time you will have heard their presentation, at least most of you. So, with that, Tara.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council. I do have, for those in the audience that can't see the presentation, I've got some extra copies of the maps here as well. As the city manager explained, we have an issue in West Newport in the Balboa Peninsula area on the Fourth of July, and that is excessively large crowds and a number of out-of-control parties in this small space that really disrupt the holiday for many of our residents and our weekly and daily visitors. To help frame that issue a bit, in, on July 4th, 2009, the Newport Beach Police Department issued three-hundred-and-forty-five citations, six-hundred-and-sixty-nine parking citations, and arrested one-hundred-and-nineteen people just on July 4th. Out of those folks arrested, about sixteen percent were actually City of Newport Beach residents. In a twenty-four-hour period, the city spent more than a hundred-and-eighty thousand dollars on public safety in West Newport, and that includes about more than two-hundred-and-forty public safety personnel that were working a twenty-four-hour period. We've been taking our current approach since 2003, when a number of municipal code changes were made, and that mainly involved creating the Safety Enhancement Zone in a section of West Newport where the city was finding most of the problems were condensed. And the procedures for road closures and public safety personnel coverage in that area have been followed since 2003. And initially, there was some progress made. But in recent talks with our West Newport Safety Committee and many of our community members in that area, they're saying that progress is stalled, and it's time for us to mix up the plan a bit, and they want to see some more significant change. Primarily, they feel that the street closure has now created almost a street party or Mardi Gras-like scene. So, we want to change our approach, and we know that changing behavior comes slowly, so we do anticipate this will be a multi-year approach, at least three years, and it involves a multi-pronged strategy. First, the police department is working to identify the known party houses. Those homes where consistently we see problems and get many complaints from the neighbors, and other trouble spots. It's, of course, my job to educate and help them inform the residents and our visitors about what our municipal code says in the Safety Enhancement Zone in particular, and the PD has already been working to enforce early and often. Our vision for our Fourth of July is a family-friendly holiday in West Newport, where police presence and protection is consistent with other areas of the city. And again, we really want our residents, our weekly renters, and our daily visitors to have the same experience as those people in other parts of our city, like those in Cronod Omar, where they can move about freely and see fireworks and have friends come to visit. Now, Lieutenant Scott McKnight will cover what the new plan entails.
Thank you, Tara. Good afternoon, council. I am this year's incident commander for our Fourth of July deployment. I'm joined here today by my captain, Dale Johnson, and our chief of police, Bob Lumen. I've been the Area One Commander for the first six months of this year, and as someone that's been down in that area for twenty-seven previous Fourth of Julies, I feel like I'm pretty aware of what the issues are down there. We've obviously tried a lot of approaches, starting with 2003, as Ms. Finnegan pointed out, the beginnings of the Safety Enhancement Zone, which I think has helped us tremendously to manage these large crowds that gather down there. It's been effective, however, after listening to people in the community over the last six months, we've learned that they still have great concerns about the large groups that gather at various portions in this containment enhancement zone, as well as the large parties that do gather there. With that, we have some changes that we think will work well, along with some of the parts of the Safety Enhancement Zone that will stay in place. Just to refresh your memory, the Safety Enhancement Zone, it basically covers the west part of Newport down to Thirty-second Street. The heavy concentration that we see here is at Balboa and Pacific Coast Highway. The zone does extend a little bit to the north into the river and Neptune Track. But we do see a lot of activity in a very visible spot at Balboa and Pacific Coast Highway. So, I'd like to address some of the changes that will occur there. As Ms. Finnegan pointed out, we would like to take back some time and space, but we think it's going to be hard to do in just one year. So, what we've done is, previously, our containment zone was at Thirty-second Street, six blocks to the east, and then it went all the way to the area of Balboa and Pacific Coast Highway. So, what we've done is, we've given or taken back six blocks. We're actually going to contain the area from Thirty-eighth Street to Pacific Coast Highway. And in a minute, I'll show you a map that'll better describe that. We also are hoping to open this area on the peninsula, the complete area, by 6:00 PM. In previous Fourth of July deployments, those areas were not opened until 10:00 PM. And we're hopeful, with our plan, that we're able to lessen the crowds, better manage the crowds, which will allow us to open this area up for the residents and for traffic. This map here shows the Thirty-eighth Street, beginnings of the containment zone, not six blocks east to Thirty-second, where it was in the past. You will be able to, and I'll show you in another slide here, you'll actually be able to leave Thirty-eighth Street. In years past, you wouldn't be able to do this. You'd be able to leave Thirty-eighth Street and actually travel off the peninsula toward Coast Highway, and also be able to go toward Thirty-second Street. These changes to the access area will also involve some limited access at Pacific Coast Highway. That limited access is going to extend into the pedestrian areas, or extend to pedestrians at both River, the shopping lot at Balboa and Pacific Coast Highway, and then Coast Highway itself. Now, this map here, there's a lot of detail here, and I'm actually going to take some time to go over it, so we all understand this proposal. If we can, we can start here at the top at Balboa and Pacific Coast Highway. In the years past, we have not allowed, once we closed it down, we have not allowed vehicle traffic to enter onto the peninsula. Our plan will continue with not allowing vehicle traffic, but we're also going to limit traffic to pedestrians and bicyclists. Pedestrians and bicyclists will actually have to go to Newport Boulevard, and then to Thirty-second Street, and then around to actually get further down the peninsula. They could also enter off of Prospect and Pacific Coast Highway. So, we're going to limit all vehicles, all pedestrians, all bicyclists. So, you might ask yourself, well, why are we taking that approach? We're taking that approach because we seem to get this large group of people that gather here difficult to manage. These groups tend to merge with parties that are held at River and Balboa, or Forty-sixth and Balboa, and we seem to get just an inordinate amount of people gathering here, kind of a light billboard, if you will, of people. So, the people that are coming down from Superior, that are from out of the area, or from Huntington Beach, all of a sudden, they realize, well, here we are. Here's where the big party is. So, we're trying to lessen these crowds, spread these crowds out. So, our first plan, again, and this would be a change, to limit pedestrian and bicyclists from entering the peninsula. We're also looking at limiting access to the Balboa Shopping Center. It's an area we commonly refer to as the triangle. This is Jack-in-the-Box here. You've got Circle K and other businesses along here. And what our proposal is, is to limit access to that shopping plaza and only allow entrance off of Coast Highway. The idea being that we stop this traffic from crossing back and forth. This just becomes a rather large scene of people moving back and forth between the shopping center and these party areas. So, our hope is, again, with that, we will lessen these crowds and spread them out. Moving on here. This just shows a flow of traffic, if you will. Traffic is still going to be permitted to leave the peninsula eastbound. This traffic will be allowed to flow both directions from Thirty-eighth Street, both westbound and eastbound. Traffic will be diverted, obviously, to Prospect Street for vehicle traffic, pedestrians, and bicyclists, or diverted to Newport Boulevard, and eventually down to Thirty-second Street. One of the other big problems we've had has been with party enforcement. And Ms. Finnegan touched on that as well, as far as our enforcement with these parties being more in line with the way we enforce parties every day of the year. And as the area commander, that's probably the biggest complaint I get for West Newport, is the large parties. And this is something that we've placed great emphasis on, not just leading up to the Fourth of July, but all the time. So, I work with our investigator, Dave Samborn, who is responsible for investigating these large parties. I work with him on a weekly basis, identifying these problem party houses. So, we know who they are, and we're working to solve this problem throughout the year. Ideally, as we get closer to the Fourth of July, we'll be in a better place as far as identifying the problem party houses and how we're going to respond to them. As far as the Fourth of July goes, we have, in the past, dedicated footbeats on every block, on the peninsula, in the containment zone, as well as what we call tac teams or party teams. And we've actually decided to stagger their hours even greater and start them earlier, so that we can make a greater presence known to these problem places earlier in the day. More changes involve how we're going to enforce pedestrian and bicycle violations. And our thought is that if we were able to lessen the crowds down the peninsula, particularly at Balboa and Pacific Coast Highway, we have more success doing enforcement, because we can work through these crowds easier. Smaller crowds lends to more effective enforcement. As I discussed earlier, we are going to start a number of different shifts. In the past, we did not run a ten o'clock shift, nor did we run a four, in the afternoon shift, going till four in the morning. We started our heavy enforcement at noon, and then brought another group of officers in at 2:00 PM. Again, our officers will be supported by the Highway Patrol, the Orange County Sheriff's Department, and police agencies throughout Orange County. So, what does this mean? It means that we're going to get, we're going to get more folks out at ten o'clock. So, if we have any early parties starting, we can, we can address those. Additionally, footbeats will be out, and as someone that worked as a sergeant on footbeat down there, our plan is, is that we have our officers and sergeants go to each, each block, each house, introduce themselves, identify who the people are, and just, just kind of a meet and greet, so that they understand that they can call us, we know who the people are there, and it's an opportunity for us to make our presence known before a party gets started. Again, I pointed out, our enforcement, as far as the number of people, is unchanged. We are going to be joined again by other police agencies throughout Orange County. It'd be Anaheim, Santa Ana, Orange PD, UCI, the like. We're also going to be joined by the Highway Patrol. They will assist us in traffic enforcement, and they will also insist by, assist by manning these barricade posts. And then, the Sheriff's Department comes in, and they help with our mobile booking team, not only at our command post at City Hall, but also out on the street. We pointed out here, we have two-hundred-and-forty-seven officers on duty in a twenty-four-hour period. One of the other questions I get from citizens, some of them outside the Safety Enhancement Zone, is, well, what's the enforcement going to be like for people? Zone, is, well, what's the enforcement going to be like for people, for your department in my area? And I will say that we do place some emphasis in the Safety Enhancement Zone, but we are also heavily deployed throughout the peninsula and other parts of the city. 247 officers over a 24-hour period. We will continue to be very firm but fair in strict enforcement on alcohol-related issues. We, we will utilize our tac teams and our, our footbeats to address any unruly conduct. And then, I think this is the first time we've done this, where we've had firework enforcement units, but this year, we're actually going to pair them with a member of the Fire Department. So you all have a police officer and a fireman working together in a car, working specifically to address any dangerous firework behavior. Our community outreach, Ms. Finnegan and I met with members of the, of the Balboa Shopping Plaza, if you will, the folks at the Triangle at Pacific Coast Highway, and shared with us, shared with them our plan to, to limit access into that plaza for a six to eight-hour period on the Fourth of July. We've also met with the West Newport Safety Committee, we've met with various council members, and we've started a mailer-off to city residents about our plan. We've also, as I pointed out, have been in contact with, with people that are throwing parties that we find to be a disturbance. We know who those people are, we are taking action now, and we're not waiting till the Second, Third, or Fourth of July to do that. We also think for this plan to be successful, we've got to get out to the community and let them know about the changes. And there are, there are some changes that they're going to want to be aware of. So through our website, through Twitter, through Facebook, and through message boards that we will begin deploying on the Second of July, people will know, as they come into the area, what to expect as far as road closures and access. And we think it's important that we get that word out early. We don't want people coming down on the Fourth of July and all of a sudden to be caught off guard or surprised. That would just make our job more difficult. We've been in touch with Traffic and Parking Control, we have some websites for the public that can certainly reach out to those websites. More contact information. I mentioned Investigator Dave Samborn, very important in this, in this plan, because we do realize that these large parties, if we can avoid them, will go a long ways to us better managing the, the holiday festivities. And with that, I will open up to any questions that you folks have about our plan.
Thank you, Lieutenant, for a good presentation. Are there any questions for Lieutenant? Well, let me just say, make one observation. As was noted, we spent about $187,000 of additional manpower to police this area during the Fourth of July. It is by far the most expensive special event in the city. This competes with the same money that we use for the Coman Race, for the Marathon, for the Corona Mar 5K, for the Taste of Newport, for all the other civic events that promote the community. But yet, the cost we incur for this is tremendous. And so, effective enforcement that reduces the magnitude of this event on our community and, and the cost to have to police it is, is very, very important. So I really applaud the efforts to make this a much lesser event in the future going forward. I recognize it's going to take a few years to, for people to find other places to go on the Fourth of July, but the impact on the community has just really been tremendous, and it needs to be alleviated, and I appreciate those efforts. Mr. Hen.
Yeah, thank, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I'd like to add my thanks to the city staff, especially City Manager Dave Kiff, who has shown leadership on behalf of the staff and the Police Department, who have been very responsive to rethinking this issue and striking out for solutions to a different end game here, one where there is a family-friendly, fun time to be had by all on the Fourth of July on the peninsula, and visitors and residents alike, and perhaps with just not so many visitors that are acting stupidly and coming to our city to do that. And so, not that we don't have residents occasionally, but nevertheless, we're going to have to take some chances, we're going to have to try some things here, and some of them may not work. We know there will be, there'll be some impact to the businesses in the Triangle Shopping Center area, and I've spoken to some of those business owners, and they're taking a very good attitude about this as well, understanding that if we do this right, it'll just be a couple, three years, and nobody will be penalized, and everyone will have a good time, and we won't have to spend so much of the city's resources to make that happen. But most importantly, that the residents that live in the area will be able to have a quality Fourth of July, just like everyone else in Newport Beach, and that's what we're really after at the end of the day. So thanks so much. I look forward to being around on the Fourth and seeing how well things work.
Thank you. Thank you. Let me open this up. There's no other council comments, so if anyone from the public would like to speak on this matter, please come forward.
Mr. Mayor, fellow councilman. My name is Craig Batley, and I've lived on, on the peninsula for about nine years now, and I've ridden my bike all up and down on Fourth of July, and have witnessed the parties and the activity the last several years. And I concur with the Dave Kiff and the staff that it's about time that we do something about the status quo, because it's been plateaued for about five years now. Initially, this, this plan, the Enhancement Zone, worked fantastically and clamped down on a lot of the activity, and probably eliminated several thousand people from coming to Newport Beach. And the job's not quite done yet, and I think this plan's an excellent one. The, a couple of comments I might have regarding the enforcement of this is, I would hope that in the process of the police issuing, let's say, DAX, and I don't know what the policy is going to be on that, that they, they do so in a fair and even-handed manner. And any penalties that might be incurred would be the same for all. Short-term lodging has a different penalty than, let's say, somebody who has a long-term lease. So I don't know what the policy is going to be regarding this particular Fourth of July regarding issuance of DAX. In the past, the, the attitude of the police has been firm but fair, and the laissez-faire is just let the parties go. So the attitude has been on the peninsula in general, and particularly in the Enhancement Zone, that, hey, as long as there's not anything, anybody breaking the law, we just let the party go. So I'm just kind of curious how much they're going to enforce, let's say, the usual DAC policy during any other day of the year. Because if they did, there'd be probably 150, 200 DAX issued on that day, which would be good for the coffers of the city. Hundred DAX times $1,000 is $100,000. So I think the education part of this really needs to be emphasized the next 30 days to get the word out as much as possible. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor and councilmember, my name is George Schroeder, and I've been a 21-year resident on the 100th block of 35th Street, and I applaud these changes that you're making here. I think it's an excellent idea. I think the problem we've had since 2003, and that was a good year that we did ratchet it down, is that the party houses have been allowed to pretty much go on, and if you have a 25-foot lot, and it's a 10-foot patio, if you have 30, 35 people in that patio, I think they do deserve a disturbing the peace citation. And it's true, in the past, they may have been kind of let go because there was an attitude, well, it's the Fourth of July. Well, that's the problem in, in that all these young people know that they can come down here, go from house party to house party and get free beer, and that's why the draw is so big. So I think we just need to bring the big party houses under control, the people who do short-term lodging should tell their residents that week that there's been a change this year, so if you're going to have a party, please keep it as a manageable amount, because it's not going to be the same as in previous years. So I applaud the changes. It's been a disaster waiting to happen with all these young people liquored up, a riot could break out, there could be people harmed, so I think it's good that we are bringing it under control. Thank you very much.
Thank you, George. Any other speakers?
Councilmembers, hi. I'm here just simply to reinforce...
Please state your name, please.
Oh, sorry, Kimberly Jamison, resident at 48th and Neptune Avenue since 1985. I just want to support this particular action. It's not about people being unpatriotic and grouchy, this is a health and safety issue, this has to do with vomit, urine, and other types of trash in your yard. And also, being able, when you're a resident here, to stay during Fourth of July. For the past five years, we've left, because it's just unbearably noisy and difficult with family and dogs and all that stuff. So this, this type of advancement is, is really important for us as residents. And we want to just say kudos to city staff and the Police Department for taking a proactive and kind of visionary, brilliant approach to this, which is something, which actually took a lot of insight to realize that by narrowing the window, you kind of reduce the potential for this kind of meandering party atmosphere. And so that's, was very counterintuitive to me, I think it's a very intelligent approach. I also just want to shout out to Lieutenant McKnight, because recently, we've had a lot of issues in our neighborhood, and he, and I've not, I've never met him or spoken with him directly, but through email, he's been incredibly responsive, and his officers have completely resolved a bunch of issues in our neighborhood with respect to vandalism, trash, and sleepless nights, and things of that nature, since the weather has gotten warm. So we thank him very much for that. And that's about 20 residents in the neighborhood of Neptune Avenue, 48th, 47th, and 49th. The only suggestions I would make is that, in previous years, it has been clear that when you turn on the bright lights at dusk, it really attenuates the crowding behavior. I don't know if that's in the budget this year, but I, I think it was effective in past years, and I would recommend using it again. And the only other suggestion I would say is, if it's possible that somewhere in the city, integrate a DUI checkpoint into the mix, then maybe that might be something you'd want to consider. But simply, just want to say thank you for being so responsive and listening to our concerns. Maybe next year, I can stay home and enjoy the Fourth.
Thank you. Any other speakers? All right, thank you. Then we'll move on to the next item, and before we do, I just want to recognize the effort of Mayor Pro Tem Mike Hen in making all of this happen and putting this together and working with the community, with the Police Department, and we all look forward to the results of the effort this year. The next item, our employee recognitions and the Dorothy Palin Award. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and councilmembers. I appreciate your time this afternoon to help us recognize the employees that have, many of whom are receiving, what, we've got 30 and 35 and 40-year pins, as well as the Dorothy Palin Award. And this is something you folks have participated in with us over the years in an employee breakfast, and we've, because of budget restrictions, we've, we've changed that format. We're hoping to still have the, an equivalent celebration, an equivalent honor and deed afterwards. There is a reception out in the, not in the foyer, because everyone's voting, but in the lobby of the, of the City Hall, so we'd invite everyone to go ahead and join us over I'm going to talk a little bit first about these employees that are receiving the pin. For the 2090 cal, sorry, 2009 calendar year, this group of 14 folks, some of whom have retired, have 445 years of public service collectively between them. And the PowerPoint that you're seeing here shows these employees who have dedicated 30-plus years, you see some with 35 and 40, to the city of Newport Beach. And I know a couple of you may have some names to read. If I may ask, it looks like Councilmember Hen to read the names of the 30-year recipients.
Well, I think...
Sorry, Councilmember Webb. I'm looking at Webb and saying Hen. Thank you.
I have a beard.
Yeah, I know. Different suit, too.
I thought that was a little test there for a minute.
I failed.
Well, for the 30-year recipients, Steve Bunting, our farm marshal, Richard Flores in our print shop, Craig Frizzell, retired police lieutenant, Tom Gacy, police captain, Fred Jacoby, retired tree maintenance service technician, John Van Heel, senior equipment mechanic from Utilities. And not attending today are Gary Mansfield, retired equipment maintenance supervisor from General Services, Bob Martinis, park and maintenance crew chief from General Services, Kent Russell, retired water production supervisor from Utilities, and Joe Slasher, retired police sergeant.
And those employees that are here for the 30-year pins, why don't you come up front? We'll give you, we have a gift bag for you, and then maybe if the mayor would join us down there for a photo, I'd appreciate that. So come on up. So again, these are the folks with 30 years of service. And next, Mayor Pro Tem Hen this time. You'd read the names of the 35-year employees. Do you have that list?
I have a list with three names on it.
That's right, that's the list.
And they are Tom Anderson, retired beach maintenance supervisor in the General Services Department, Greg Lewis, pest control technician in the General Services Department, and Jim Philbin, fire engineer in the Fire Department.
And these folks, correct me if I'm wrong, were unable to attend tonight, so we'll give them their gift bags. Thank you, Terry, and thank you, Mr. Hen. And then finally, Mayor Curry, we have a 140-year recipient.
Well, it is a pleasure to recognize, although he's not able to attend today, Chip Logan, a retired utilities supervisor, who has served the city for more than 40 years of dedicated service. And you think about going back all of that time, the changes that have occurred to the city, and the contributions that Chip has made to making Newport Beach the kind of city that it is.
So because they may be watching at home, let's give a round of applause to the 35 Okay, so next, we're going to talk about the Dorothy Palin Award. And just to remember, to remind folks, Dorothy Palin retired from the city of Newport Beach in 1993. She had worked here for 47 years. She was revered by, by city employees as the city employee who possessed the characteristics of a model-top employee, such as initiative, integrity, dependability, judgment, and cooperation. And every year since her retirement, a Newport Beach city employee who best exemplifies those characteristics has been selected as the Employee of the Year. So this year, the employees nominated for the Dorothy Palin Award are Shane Berkley, Water Conservation Coordinator. You can see Shane has... So Shane has 10 years of service, he's spent a lot of time creating a great website, Watersmart Newport, been out there in the field all the time with the public, making presentations about water conservation, and really getting us to where we need to be in terms of protecting our water supply and making sure we can, we meet our, including our water quality goals, because water conservation's such a big part of that. So one of the comments that folks made in nominating Shane was how well he works with and cooperates other departments, always a good thing. So that's Shane Berkley. Next, Celeste with Senior Services. I always butcher Celeste's last name, so... Most folks here know Celeste because of her 22 years of service, and really, literally, the... the, not literally, but certainly the heart and backbone and foundation of Oasis, and a big part of the vision for the new center. And in addition to implementing the transportation program, which continues to expand today, I give Celeste great credit just for managing this process of the new Oasis, including keeping all the existing programs going while they're not at their site. And her folks, her staff, and her clients, her customers are out throughout the town, and it's worked pretty darn seamlessly. And I know they're all anxious to get back in the building, but I couldn't be more appreciative of the role that she played in making sure it's worked as well as it has as they've been outside of Oasis. Next, Iris Lee. Iris is a senior civil engineer in Public Works with seven years of service, very active and volunteering with different city events, and great with customer service and helping improve morale along those lines. And she's somebody that I know the Public Works Director assigns a lot of challenging and complex projects to because Iris is one of those can-do people that we really appreciate having here. Next, Avery McGlinty. Avery's been with us for about nine years and hired as an MIS technician. He's now an applications analyst. He created the Master ID application, which was an effort to really consolidate all of the different codes associated with, say, one customer in the city so that we can more efficiently provide them service with billing issues. That project won a Putnam Award for Innovation in Government in 2006. He's helped create the tracking application that we use on our city system. Those are, that's to track different requests that come in from the public and indeed from the staff. That's the Quest system. And as noted, his colleagues say he's constantly thinking of ideas to improve the systems and streamline the processes. So that's Avery. Next is Jamie Pollard. So Jamie's with Public Works, and she's the administrative manager there. She's been with us for about four years. Has noted and envisioned the construction map and log for Public Works, and that really helps the council, the public, and the staff really track where things are and how things are going, managing the entire capital improvement program budget. So Jamie is the person to go to for, that the entire Public Works staff goes to make sure that all makes sense and stays proper. So she's also been leading for Public Works, the analysis of different processes that we're working on in terms of improving things and restructuring at the city, including contract management and then our maintenance and repair function, all the different contracts we have for maintenance and repair, and then our administrative functions. So folks that do analysis and aspects like that within the city. So that's Jamie. Jamie's our fifth nominee. So it's my pleasure to announce that the winner for 2010, the Dorothy Palin Award winner, is Iris Lee. Come on up, Iris. I think we have some family members here. This is Iris's mom and boyfriend. So Iris was surprised. Hopefully, mom and boyfriend hid in the back, so nobody knew. But maybe, actually, Mayor Curry, if I could ask you next to come down one more time after the family picture and take a picture with Iris. One more picture with the mayor. And then if Iris and the mayor would stay down here, too, I'd like to invite all the nominees up. This is a special time for everybody who's nominated, and if you come up, we also have gifts for you, so just to honor that recognition. So one more photo. Iris, if you had brief remarks you'd like to make, you're welcome to do that. You don't have to, but think of it like you're presenting a staff report. It doesn't have to be very long. And maybe an assessment district.
[laughter]
You're doing one tonight. You could actually present the assessment district and just say, you know, thank you.
[laughter] Everybody, I wasn't expecting this, so I didn't prepare any type of acceptance speech or anything. Furthermore, I do have to present tonight, so I can't really cry and mess up my makeup either. So thank you very much. I really appreciate it, the management team, the selection committee, council, everybody that selected me for this prestigious award, and everybody that actually spent the time to write that nomination form. You know, everybody here actually made me who I am here today, and I wouldn't be anything without all of you. And thank you very much.
Thank you. So thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council, and again, congratulations to Iris and everybody who is nominated and for the folks for your pins. And just as a reminder, anyone is welcome to join us over in the City Hall lobby for a brief reception and say hello to the folks out there.
Let me just say on behalf of the City Council, thank you to our award winners, but to all of our city employees. You know, we normally do this event at a breakfast. That's one of the things our employees have sacrificed this year because of the budget, but they've made many other sacrifices that are helping us close this budget gap. And through it all, they have continued to provide the high quality of service that the city of Newport Beach and its residents have come to expect and deserve. And I know on behalf of all the residents, we want to thank you for all that you've done during the course of this year under difficult circumstances to respond to the challenges facing our community. It's truly appreciated throughout the community. I work with Iris on many projects that are important throughout the city and in my district, and out of the quality job that she does, and each and every one of the people who we recognize today. We have employees who have been here, as you've heard, 30, 35, 40 years, serving this community, who really love this community and who invest their heart and soul in it. And to all of you, a very sincere thanks for all that you do, day in and day out. Mr. Hen.
I'd just like to add my thanks as well, and to say that I have no doubt that all five of the nominees were deserving of winning this award, and furthermore, no doubt that the five nominees represent our city staff in general as a hard-working, very dedicated group of people who are always trying to do the right thing on behalf of our residents. I would bring one special little note of thanks, though. I think the selection of Iris was a very good selection. Having said all of that, when you mentioned that she was given difficult tasks, not the least difficult of those is managing the assessment districts. We've had four of them on the Peninsula in just the last year or so. And as an example of why Iris, I think, was a deserving winner of this award, just yesterday, I called her because I had a resident call me in a panic needing a ballot for tonight's vote on the Assessment District 100. And I actually emailed her over the weekend asking her if there was any way to help get this person a ballot, knowing that time was so short. And she emailed me back, I think Saturday afternoon or Sunday, and said, I'd be happy if you would just give me the name and phone number to contact that person Monday morning, and I'll take the ballot over to her, which she did. And that's a very good example of going the extra mile, and I appreciate it, Iris, and congratulations.
Okay, I do understand that there is reception for our employees, so let me ask, is there any public comment on the awards? Seeing none, is there any public comment on any matter not on the agenda? Seeing none, we are adjourned to... We'll close sessions when we get there.